Are you gonna be able to check this email? Because if not, I can just do it handily.
I checked my email just before I came down here. Yes.
Probably no.
Okay.
The very least speaker was just on during the meeting.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, we should have been doing that all along. I mean, for a lot of course.
Uh, can Nicole, can you hear us? Nicole?
Yeah, um, Hector, I can hear you very well. I wasn't able to hear the mayor too well. It felt like she was far away, but I know she was talking.
Nicole, can you hear me?
Hello, hello.
I can.
All right, great.
Hello.
We did have.
Test, test, test.
Perfect. Greenville.
Oh yeah, everyone sounds great.
I'll refer to that email next to.
Mayor, when you're ready.
Are you ready, Hector? Okay, so, um, let's go ahead and call the study session of April twenty fourth. Um, of the talent city council order. Roll call, please.
Councilor Pardon Miller.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Pasizo.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Panemirov.
Here.
Councilor Coley.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. Um. Curiosity, do we need to, uh, do we need to adopt minutes from our study sessions? I don't have an agenda in front of me, I'm afraid. Uh, because I, because I have the, uh, thank you, because I have the, um.
Yeah.
I have the, uh, council rules on my screen. Um, so, uh. Are, do we, are we adopting them on the council agenda? Is that what we're doing?
They're not prepared yet, but, uh, with Lusetto coming back on Monday, while we're still working on catching up on minutes.
And, and they will end up on our council agenda, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. All right, um, so with that, uh, the second item on the agenda is discussion on the council rules. Steph?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I, uh, have passed out hard copies of what we're going to talk about tonight, but you also have it on your screen in case the print on the hard copy is too small. Um, and, uh, um, I just took an excerpt, uh, on the hard copies that I sent out, starting on page four. Uh, and that's what shows on the screen as well, because we've already covered pages one through three in our previous discussions. And today I hope to cover, uh, pages, uh, four through nine. Um, but we'll see how far we get. Um. Last time, um. We discussed the kind of the issue of, of managing public participation in our meetings. Um, and we had a fairly extensive discussion. Um, and, uh, and agreed that we would, uh, consider, as we come back to finalize these rules. Consider, uh, having just one time at each council meeting for public participation called the public forum. And that would be for members of the public to talk about, um, both, um, agenda items and non-agenda items. Uh. That they want to discuss for that reason. Um, and we also discussed, uh, remote participation. And especially how and when to submit speaker requests forms. Not going to go over those again today. I just kind of wanted to remind you where we got to. Um, and, and just start moving on, starting, uh, at, uh, item two H three. Um, at the, near the bottom of page four, which concerns outside communications during a public meeting. Um. Uh, we did touch on this briefly, and I don't think this is controversial. But I did want to bring it to your attention again and ask you to take a, a quick read of that item three near the bottom of page four. Um, you know, get it on the screen that has the title outside communications during a public meeting. Um, and if you take a second to read that and, and see if you have any reactions to that proposed language. And I, I think we tried to make sure it got written so that if somebody got an emergency call from home, for instance, they could take that call and now it's still either in a rule. This concerns anything on the agenda. Um, hearing no comment, um.
I just have one.
Sure.
Um, first of all, this is great. And well, I mean, I think it covers. What we hoped for, um. So, um, if so enabled, the transcript from the Q and A and chat must be uploaded as part of the record. Um, so is there, do you think, does anybody think that there might be reason to add greater detail to how? To whether or not, under what circumstances or whether or not, or is it going to be discretionary for the mayor and the city manager? Is that the intention is to have it be a discretionary thing?
Uh, well, if it's, uh, the way that this is written, if it's, if we're online, when you use, let's say, using the chat feed. Um, it would be. That it's a public meeting, that, that would be like a comment that somebody would make standing up in person for the council meeting. So it ought to be, uh, reflected in the, um, in the record of the meeting. So if it's written so that that part wouldn't be discretionary and a part of the mayor. Um. Uh, unless, I, I guess it's, I suppose somebody could be calling from home to say, you know, there's an emergency at home.
Oh.
Do that via chat, but I would think they would do that on the telephone.
Yeah, no, the part I'm talking about is where it says the mayor or the city manager may elect to enable chat. And I just.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that I have a form of thought. It just struck me as a little kind of. Um.
There's no extended ratings service.
Yeah, and, um. You know, so. Enabling chat for the purpose of what? I mean, we have speaker request forms that we take, like, like, do we want to? Do we want to flesh out why we would do that, or?
Uh, we, we could. I'm trying to think what, when we might want to do that.
I'm trying to think of when, when, um, when would we, what, under what circumstances would we enable the chat? Uh, Councilor Nama, I mean, Perry Miller?
So close. Um, I knew it started with a P. Thank you. Yeah. Um, I was thinking that this could potentially refer to like a town hall. That we had Zoom or like a, some type of question answer, not like a regular type of meeting. And I also, my interpretation of this would, is that it would be something that was discussed far in advance of the meeting. So there would be like a decision made prior to the meeting, oh, we should have Q and A or chat enabled for this.
Yeah.
I wasn't into, I didn't interpret it as something that would happen in the moment, but maybe that's a good point.
It, it does a little, it a little bit reads like that. I'm just saying, and, um, so, yeah, uh, Council Byers.
Perhaps, like, not, I agree with what Council Perry Miller's.
I agree with what Council Perry Miller said, and also I would wonder if that would be something that we would include in part of our noticing or, um. Communications about that meeting, if that is a feature that is available.
That nails it down. Council Colley, did you have a comment?
No, Council Perry Miller said.
Did you get that, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Council Pasizo?
I just thought, you know, the introduces it. Um. If there's a special meeting held such as a session where higher level, so it's, I think it's premeditated. It's not something you just decide in the middle of a meeting necessarily.
It's just, I, I hear you, but the part where it says the mayor or city may elect to enable chat seems like, it sounds real time, you know? And I just want to make sure that it's clear that this is, this is under special circumstances and there, those circumstances would be determined.
I interpreted to be like calling a special meeting. You know, we're going to have a meeting about that and we're going to have chat available.
Yeah.
Or, or kind of like say a town hall meeting.
Right.
I, I don't know. I mean, I think it's subjective.
The next pandemic.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I, I think it's subjective. Um, Council, Council Byers?
Well, to that point, since we just in this quick read through have reinterpretations of that, perhaps we could have some additional specificity added to the language.
I will plan to do that. So the next time you see it, uh, it will try to clarify that, uh, it, uh. It, it is a premeditated situation that.
That you're looking, yeah, and in which case it makes total sense. Yeah. Okay. Mayor, uh, Council Perry Miller?
Um, thank you. I have a question about the last clause of this, the, and video of the meeting will also be part of the official record. Is that required? I mean, I, my question is, is that a requirement that we're including because the Q and A and chat would be involved? Or is that like a separate, just the city has had a practice of posting video of the meeting? I don't think we're required to do that. So I'm just wondering if those two things are connected or if they're separate.
Uh, I wrote it that way, thinking we were talking about a Zoom type situation where it's sort of automatically. Video is automatically available, but I think it's a good point. And I think maybe if I added the word any in front of video in that second to last line, it would clarify that we're not. Necessarily committing to having video every time, but if it is online and video is available, then that becomes part of the meeting record.
I mean. I wonder if we even need to include it, is what I'm thinking. It sort of seems like we're. You know, making this overly cumbersome for ourselves. Um. I mean, I think, I don't know. Stop. I have more input on that, but.
I, I think I, I think I agree. I think we could leave out that clause and if video is available, we would automatically be making it available, uh, as part of the meeting record. But if it's not, we wouldn't. So I, I, it's kind of redundant.
Uh, Council Panamara?
No, I was just going to say that my experience is Zoom, like the chat is saved into a text file separately. Um, yeah, I kind of concur. It can be cumbersome on us to store video for years and years. Um, I think it's great that our, that we do have video of the YouTube channel, all of that. I think that's a plus. But to write it in as a requirement for the city when it's not required, um, by public record, meaning all, all that. Um, I, I don't want to put too much pressure on staff to do that, so.
Okay, I'll make revisions accordingly.
Thanks, everybody. Good conversation. Carry on, Dave.
Uh, moving on then to, uh, the guidelines for, um, public comments. Uh, that starts at the bottom of page four, uh, both the online version that you may be looking at or the hard copy you're looking at. Um, and if you, uh, then move on to the top of. Page five. And, uh, if you'd look at A and B there very quickly, I think those are non-controversial, uh. Um, but if you could take a look at those and give me your reaction, if you do have any concerns about A and B. Not hearing any. I'll move on to C and D, uh, which are, are more complex. Um, in particular, C, item number three, uh, be constructive and respectful. Uh, uh. When this so was presented previously, there was some public comment about, uh. How, whether respectful is a, is something that we can.
Enforce?
Yeah, enforce. Um, and, uh, and there's a degree to which C and D cover the same territory. Um, and to sort of add to the complication, I also passed out, uh, to you an email I got from Councils and Amreps. Um, where she copied some similar provisions from, uh, the PUC. Um. Uh. So I, I feel fairly confident that the PUC provisions would pass muster. Um, I feel the, um, uh. The, um, provisions of. Um. Uh, actually, if, uh, most of C and D also would pass muster because those are basically taken from LOC's guide. Um, but. You may want to look at all sort of all three of those, uh, items. Council Panamara's, the suggestion from the PUC, item B and item C, and see if there are terms in there that. You're uncomfortable with, um, because I'm, what I'm thinking is, next time you'll see this, I want to kind of consolidate C and B into one provision. Um, um, but I want to get your thinking on whether we've gone too far, not far enough, uh, whether some of the words, uh. Are slippery enough that you don't want to use them.
Council Perry Miller?
Um, thank you. Yeah, I like that these have been pulled from places that are already, you know, using these things. I'd like that we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. Um, I did just have a comment about C three. I, I like these words, be constructive and respectful. Um, but I also feel like. You know, if folks come to speak to us, I don't actually believe that their comments need to be constructive. I think if they're disappointed in something that the city has done, they have every right to maybe not be constructive. I think respectful definitely, but, um, so yeah, just the word constructive, I, I would take out.
Uh, Council, uh, Panamara?
Thanks. Um, yeah, I agree with that. I think constructive is something that it, it, yeah. Um, it kind of says we really want to hear good news. Um, and it's also difficult to, it's not very objective. Respectful also isn't particularly objective. But that's why I'd, I'd like to see it, um, replaced with the, the PUC guidelines. I, I love the specificity of the PUC guidelines and I also, um, like the, the idea of personal, you know, attacks, derogatory remarks. Same to individuals and all of that. I think, I think that kind of sums up, um. A lot of the ways people can be disrespectful. I don't, and, and this is actually a question for everybody. I, I don't think that we would lose anything if we adopted all seven of these. And didn't have the word respectful in there. But I don't know necessarily.
Um, would, Council Byers?
Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, you said exactly the point that I would have said. You just beat me to it. I also think it might be helpful to have these specifically, uh, the OPUC public comment guidelines posted. With our, the various points of access to speaker request forms. So it's not a surprise for folks.
Council Colley?
Yeah, I agree with, uh, the thoughts that were just said, and I have a question. Would these PUC guidelines replace D? Because it seems like there's a lot of crossover in there. Um, and it seems like, yeah, C three could just basically be removed.
Yeah, I think I would try to, um. Mel C and D together, the one provision, and make it mostly the PUC guidelines. I will point out though, the, what's not included in those PUC guidelines and is, um. Is included in the LOC guidelines and is pretty important is the notion of, um. Um, disruptive, um, conduct.
DI.
That's, that's the one, I know in the city of Portland, they struggled with these words and, um, and it's gone to court a few times. And it was very clear when there was disruptive conduct, that is very clearly something that is enforceable. So I would like to include both that notion in there. And.
Are you talking, you're talking about DI?
D one.
Yes, yes.
Is it D one? Yeah, D one, excuse me. D one.
Yeah.
And.
And I, the other thing is not, a couple of the things actually that are not included in the, um. The PUC version that's included in LOC version, which is applauding or holding up signs. Um. Um. And then the, uh, X, the notion of the presiding office of being able to exclude somebody. Um, from, um, well, that's really in, in me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um. So there are some pieces from the PUC that I'd like to try to sort of incorporate also. And just come back to you with some, some language that does sort of merge those.
Council Byers?
Um, I'm actually curious if D two is necessary since already it's established that. Uh, the council does not respond to public commentary unless the rules are relaxed. And that's just a question. I'm not saying we need to strike it. I'm just wondering.
Council Panamara?
I just want to say from experience, I think that's really useful to have that in there. I have seen people just get blasted, um, from, you know, from the public speaking. And I think this kind of, uh, dissuades that.
Yeah. Any further comments?
Yeah, I certainly commented on D two then, uh, on directly questioned and that, that's been the rule that we've followed, um, in the past.
Yeah, I like it. Council Pasizo?
I think there's some benefit to what, um, was just stated that, uh, that is part of what people, what people see when they get a speaker form or something. So it's, because if it's in the rules, most people aren't reading the rules, but I think it's worth putting out there so they know going in.
Are you talking about C and D? Is that what everybody's talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
All of that. I mean, I, I just wanna add the signs and stuff. People would, did you know that before you come, before you sign?
Yes, right, before you draw them. Yeah. All right, uh, is there any other comments on this section? All right, this is great. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, moving on to um, section two H, five. Uh, regarding written comments generally, if, if you would look at um, five A and B, just leave that alone and give me any uh, feedback you might have.
I do have a comment, um, actually. So there is a difference between one through seven and what is found in D one. D one, in my opinion, adds to the meaning of all of this. Um, and so I, I almost feel like this is not meant to be an exhaustive list, one through seven.
Right.
And, and saying that, um, because there's further definition in D one and, um, and I wouldn't want to get caught up in an argument about, well, I didn't break any of the rules one through seven because there's further explanation. I mean, specifically, you know, not, not disrupting the meeting with, you know, defamatory or derogatory statements or questioning the motives, you know, characteristics, reputations, or the motives of others, those, those, that adds additional context. So I, I feel like, am I making sense? Just like, I wanted to point that out. Uh, Council Perry Miller?
Yeah, I think that if I'm understanding, I think that they will combine PUC one through seven with D I and
Well, I thought it was gonna be in place of C three.
And, or just kind of like combine C and D and E seven. Is that right?
That's my, my plan would be to take those, those three different sources, uh, C and D one and the PUC and kind of merge them into uh,
One single policy. Okay, I didn't catch that. Yeah, I thought you were replacing C three with, okay, got it. All right. Thank you. Sorry to digress. Council Perry Miller?
Um, I had a quick question about uh, E, actually before we move on to five. Um, the presiding officer may exclude from further participation in that section. I just wanted to make it, I just wanted to clarify, this is something that would have to happen in a meeting that no people can be banned, like as a blanket.
That's
This is something that would have to happen in a meeting.
That's true, and I
And I think that this is what it says. I just wanted to clarify that it's really clear, cause that's also really clear for the public.
That's an important distinction to make, uh, because uh, there have been cases where the city councils have uh, kept somebody who, who was disruptive in, in meeting number one from participating in meeting number two, and that was not allowed.
Yeah.
You have to, if you're gonna be uh, uh, excluded from a meeting, it has to be disruptive in that meeting.
And it doesn't mean any other than that meeting. I, and I think that's what
Correct.
Needs to be clarified as well.
Yeah, I was trying to say that by saying uh, in an ongoing council meeting, but maybe I could make that clearer.
I mean, I, I read it that way, but just for clarity, I think.
Um, Council Prestesso suggested the language for the duration of the meeting.
Yeah, I like that. Okay, moving on to uh, item five on written communications generally, I think we had a chance to look those over. There are no comments, we can move on to the harder stuff.
So um, I just wanna check on uh, five A really quickly where it says um, that uh, emails can be sent to public testimony at City of Talent with an appropriate subject line. All such written communications become part of the public record. So that is, you're able to cap, the, the recorder's office is able to capture those emails at that address. Is that correct? So in addition to the uh, well, so public testimony at, does that go to all of the council members as well? I think it would have to be forwarded, sorry.
If emails to the public testimony email also are forwarded to all council members?
Right.
Uh, currently they are not.
So, but they would be.
They can be very easily.
Well, I think that's the only way to affect this uh, policy.
Okay.
Yeah, is, am I, am I reading it wrong? Council, Council Colay and then Council Byers. Okay, Council Byers.
Uh, if it's public testimony, wouldn't it be included in written communications in our agenda packet? Where we would then see it?
Well, it, it indicates here that it just becomes part of the record.
Ah, I see what you're saying. So some clarification on that.
And, and, and that's, I mean, I think this, I think this is headed in the right direction because we can't always get written communications onto the agenda. But they would be in the minutes. So this allows us to take these up to the last minute, pretty much, as long as we're copied, as long as we're also on um, that email address as well. Yeah. Um, Council Penamara?
Um, one of the things that kind of bothered me about written communications in the agenda packet, or I guess maybe even in the minutes is like people who come here and testify, it's just so and so spoke on this item. Whereas um, it kind of gives a platform to people who stay home and just write a big, long email. And, you know, put that, um, put that out there. So I'm wondering, um, of course it becomes part of public record. I'm just wondering if they can just be in abbreviated um, ways as far as, well, I guess the agenda is what was troubling me more than um, the uh, or sorry, the agenda packet rather than the minutes.
Yeah, because I believe public meetings law requires us to attach any document that we refer to in the meeting. So if we discuss uh, if, you know, and I, I would imagine
That we wouldn't necessarily discuss it. In fact, we, we don't currently.
Yeah, to me, it's like three degrees of separation um, to get it right, you know, but that's just my feeling. Uh, so Council Perry Miller and then Council Colay.
Thank you. Um, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can, I'm having trouble um, thinking about five and six separately. I'm wondering if there's a way that we can put into this, the essence of like, if people want to connect with council, they can talk to us at a public meeting or they can email us. But I, and then any of that would be on the public record. I think it's strange that we have the written communication section on our agenda. I think it's strange that people can ask for things to be included in that section. Um, anyone can email a council at any time and that it's of course on the public record. And I feel like those comments, since they are for us, there's this expectation that we're going to read them, we're going to process them. And then um, you know, that's how you get what you want into the council. So I think it's, I mean, my preference is that the written communications section kind of be, I don't know if we, if I would scrap it entirely, but it just seems extremely cumbersome for this public testimony email to be forwarded to council. I don't know. So this is not a well-formulated thought, but um, it seems like five and six. Yeah, there's just some issues.
I think the context, oh, I'm sorry, Council Colay, and then I'll give some context.
Yeah, I, I agree with that sentiment and my commoner question was kind of along those lines is, were you referring to written communications that are general and underneath this written communications form or written communications that are somebody who's speaking on a specific agenda item? Because to me, the ones on a specific agenda item makes complete sense that their comments would be recorded and underneath that agenda item, but if somebody's I don't know, writing us about something in general, I don't know, that makes as much sense? And, and why should they be separate?
Council Penamara?
I, I kind of wanna think about how like the state agencies take, um, or even the legislature, they take written comments and they take oral comments. So like during the hearing, people show up remote or in person and say their piece. And then other people can also submit written comments up to an hour before, and those are available for people to read um, on a public website. So anybody can read them at any time, but there's, there's a cutoff for written and then you have the actual speaking to the decision makers on, on an issue.
Council Perry Miller?
Um, just as a little teeny bit of um, context, I know that the city of Medford um, is much bigger than us. But uh, the city of Medford um, at a point in their meeting, if they're talking about an item, their recorder will say, oh, we received ten comments about this item. All of the comments are forwarded to council, so everyone can see all the comments, but like at the meeting, there's just a reference to comments rather than, again, it being this cumbersome thing of all of these comments having to be then put into the meeting minutes by staff. Yeah, I just, you know, we're a small city.
Yeah, I think that's
The, the essence of both of these, five and six, um, contained already in, in the existing rules. And at least my interpretation reading that was five was about general comments. And when, when, when five B concludes, or five A concludes by saying it becomes part of the public records, that just means if somebody makes a public records request, it has to be um, supplied to them. I have, I had understood that six was when somebody had a comment they wanted to make about a particular agenda item. And that's when we would um, as long as they send it in enough time uh, for it to be included. That uh, that's when it would become part of a particular meeting's um, records. Um, that it be referenced in the, in the um, in the minutes and, and uh, in, included in the minutes if they, if they asked them. Anyway, that's, I'm just telling you, the way I interpreted the existing rules, you of course could do what you want with that.
So I think my concern is the, um, I prefer the minutes to the agenda packet.
I think somebody might say though, well, I, I, I would like at least to have the possibility that if I'm commenting on an agenda item, council would have the possibility of reading it um, before decisions is made on that.
Yeah, but I, I don't, well, I don't know, it just feels like there's, you know, so much, there's platforming done that way rather than, you know, a communication of council. And that, that's really my concern. And also having to redo the agenda packet again and again and again. So, yeah, it's
I mean, that's what we've gotten into is just, you know, revising the agenda packet over and over and over again until we, until we said we're not, you know, we don't have to do that. And uh, the, the context of the written communications was, that was uh, added to the council rules in the last, um, we're the only city in the city that does, in, in the valley that I know of that does, that adds, that adds written communications to our agenda. It's, it's we're not even talking about receiving written communications on an agenda item or even a non-agenda item. We're actually installing them on our agenda, which is the purview of the city manager. And um, uh, so to my knowledge, we're the only city that does that. And it was in, it was a response to um, uh, this practice that the city was doing where um, councillors would read people's people could send something in and councillors were reading things into the record and it just got, it got really cumbersome. Um, and so I'm just saying, I think what I'm hearing is that we're not finding that either of those are necessary. Uh, people can write to the council on agenda items and non-agenda items, but to be able to install stuff onto our agenda is another matter altogether. And that's clearly the purview of the city manager in the charter. And then the council uh, has some access through the ORS. So I think, let's just leave it there is what the suggestion I'm hearing. Are you raising your hand or were you scratching?
Well, I, I was raising my hand, but I'm sort of evolving my thinking and hearing other people talk.
Yeah, well, take your time.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah. I'm just trying to be funny.
I'll get on you.
Lighten things up a little bit.
Yeah, I, I guess now that I'm talking, um, I think it's, it's, it's part of it, it, it's kind of complicated is more than I thought initially, listening to you guys talk about it, is that I think it's worth the present, making it clear to the public that when there's comments, especially about agenda items, that we're aware of them and, and have at least the opportunity to read them before the agenda item comes up. And to me, that's an argument for wanting them to be part of the agenda. But now I can see that there's, you know, there could be grandstanding or whatever going on at the same time and having agendas being updated, updated. So I'm wondering, in lieu of adding it to the agenda, can we have on the website where the agenda's there and then we could have a separate link that goes to comments about for the agenda that we just, they come in and they just get put there and then you don't have to update the agenda. You just, the comments are there for the councillors or for the public to go look at and, and see what they are? Does that make any sense or help at all?
And then they'd all be included in the minutes if they pertained to the meeting. Or they, or they could even just be referred to in the minutes because somebody could go back and look on the website. They really wanted to see what the letter said. So that would be more like what, you know, Council Penamara was describing for people who testify in person. They don't get the benefit of every word they say not being repeated.
Council Colay and then Perry Miller?
Yeah, I understand the idea behind that. My question would be for staff, like technically, is the process any different for somebody emails in a comment and staff has to go post it on, you know, a different link on the website versus copying and pasting it into the agenda and just uploading that new document?
Well, my experience with putting things on a website is you know, usually there's just a folder and you put stuff in there and then when you click on the link, you see what's ever in the folder. And there's now with SharePoint and stuff, it can be a little different, but it's, my experience is a pretty straightforward thing to do.
Would there need to be any sort of like screening though on the staff side? Or are you just thinking of somebody sends in a comment and it just automatically lives in that spot?
Well, I, I think the, you're sort of introducing a whole thing, but I think these sections C and D and these PUC comments need to apply to written comments as well. So they probably would have to be screened somehow.
Yeah, and I think that's, I, I was just gonna bring up the same point that we should also suggest in some way that they're, they're subject to the same comments rules at all. I mean, I think that one of the challenges we're touching on is that some of these letters have just been out and out personal attacks on some of, on some of the elected officials, and they're completely demoralizing and, and that's part of our agenda packet. So we don't need to do that. Um, so if, if we can make it clear that they're subject to the, we don't have to do that. So, I mean, subject to the same rules. Council Perry Miller?
Um, just briefly, I mean, the, the reality is that if someone sends something in writing, it is just gonna be part of the public record, no matter what it says, no matter how, you know, defamatory or whatever, but um, which, you know, and I don't, I think that I worry that this But which, you know, and I don't, I think that I worry that this would incentivize people not showing up, not simply emailing council when they could easily do that. It provides more of a platform for written comments. I feel like then someone who actually comes here, because like you said, Dave, there's not, there's not a transcript of the people who, you know, comes and needing to speak. So I mean, my preference would be that we encourage people to, you know, email their representatives, their thoughts about agenda items or non-agenda items. And then, and then any written communication is part of the public record.
Which is literally just about what every other city does.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, Counselor Penomarif?
Yeah, I just want to add that also speakers who are limited to like three minutes. And right now there's no limit to how long people can go out and writing. And also just it's so easy to auto generate and just spam us to death with, with a bunch of stuff. So that's why I really do prefer, you know, not giving a platform to people who can just auto generate a bunch of.
That's what Facebook is for.
Yeah, stick to Facebook.
Counselor Byers?
Do we want to put a word limit?
What's that?
Do we want to place a word limit on our written communications?
I think.
Well, so if I may, it's like if, if I were doing, if I want to email my legislator, I can write as long an email as I want. If I'm doing the public testimony thing, that, that will cut me off at X amount of words or characters or something like that.
Counselor Colley?
I mean, is there a difference in this discussion? Because in the, talking about a word limit between general written comments and somebody writing comments that they would want to speak on an agenda item? Because somebody might from a business or something submit a report related to an agenda or something longer than whatever word limit we might create for just a general written comment about whatever somebody feels like saying. But I feel like that could be.
Which they could do, they could actually do from the podium as well. They can give a quick three minute thing and, and then hand to the counselors whatever report they want. So I think what's accessible one way should be accessible another. Counselor Perry Miller?
I think people who speak at the meeting get three minutes. If they, anyone should be able to send us any email with any amount of words about any subject. But again, I think that the, the comments through Zoom or in person, the time limit should be enough. Does that make sense?
Yep. So do you have a, do you have a, is there anything that you?
Got several ideas.
Yeah, anything you're unclear about, anything you want to ask about?
I don't think so, but let me, let me tell you what I think is congealing in my mind. And that is simplifying five and six. And, and kind of going with the notion that Counselor Pesteza mentioned of putting written comments on agenda items in the, on the website, but not modifying our agendas. So we don't get into this, you know, late agenda amendments, because that confuses everybody. That allows people to kind of say what they want, but, and, and know that others can look at it if they want to. I think that's.
And, and by that, we already do that. And I, I don't think we should reinvent it with a folder. We already do that in agenda minutes and recording. So we have a file on the website where you can go and look at the written minutes. And if the, the letters are just attached to the written minutes, it's the same thing. So I, I wouldn't like go necessarily go into creating a whole new folder for it. But it's, it's easy to find.
Well, I guess the only distinction, and maybe it's not that important that I can think of is with the minutes, you get all these things after the meeting where there's a place that people, I was thinking we're, we're trying to find a place for people to see relevant comments.
Oh, for the, during the meeting.
During.
Yeah, that's really a good point. Yep. Yeah, great.
Counselor Para Miller?
I sort of disagree. I just don't, I don't like, I don't think that the city should be in a position where we're creating like a place where people can sort of like look through all of these other people's comments and compare and contrast and be like, look, there's 500 comments about this item. So, you know, it must be terrible or it must be really popular. I just think that if people want to communicate to council, council is the body making decisions. They should email council or they should come to a meeting and address council. I don't think that we have to be in charge of including every single message about every agenda item in our minutes. I just don't think that that's necessary. I mean, those comments are for council. Those comments are meant for us. It's our responsibility to read those comments, but it's not the city's responsibility to list every email that a citizen sends us. Of course, anyone can do a public records request at any time, but.
I just want to say, I think you know, you know that that's, it's not a public forum. It's a business meeting.
Okay, so does that change your, your synthesis a little bit?
That's kind of the general agreement. And again, you'll have a chance to look at what I come up with and see if it reflects what you really want.
I mean, what we, what we are doing and what we are suggest, what we're currently doing and what, what we were, have been talking about is above and beyond what the public records law requires. And, and what Colette, I think, is suggesting is let's just do what the public law requires. And now, so we're not running afoul, but we're also not asking for a bunch of additional administration.
Counselor Colley?
So just to clarify, it was kind of discussed in that session of talking, but are we removing the written communications section from the very end of our agenda packet or our agenda?
That would come off the order of business, yes. Is there, is anybody disagree with that? Just for the, since we've had such a robust discussion, I just want to make sure we have a consensus on where we landed. All right.
Okay. Moving on to section three A, saying that a mayor, the mayor or the counselor wished to have an item placed on the agenda for an upcoming meeting, shall so advise the city manager at least one week in advance. My question is, is one week too, too short? That's, that's, that one week provision is new. It's taken from another city, but. I just want to be sure you're comfortable with that. Have we, and I guess one argument for keeping that in is we, we really need to, for a Wednesday meeting, we need to have the agenda put together from the staff point of view by Thursday, Thursday before, and then it comes out to you on Friday.
Counselor Penomarif?
Yeah, I think that's smart because it, it gives an expectation, the time to put together the agenda. If there's an emergency two days before or something, you know, we can always amend the agenda in the meeting right there with everybody's consent. So I think it's covered.
If it's, if it's a week, and we didn't see your request on Wednesday, that gives us one day to review your request.
Here's my concern is my understanding of our charter is that it's the city manager's purview to, to build the agenda. And so it's still discretionary if a counselor makes a request. Whereas if we make the request in the previous meeting, which is what, how it's currently built, when we get to other agenda items at the end of the, and we want to, we want to advance an, an agenda item of substance, then we have the consent of the council when we do that. So not one council member or the mayor has the ability to just advance an agenda item that maybe none of us, none of the rest of us wants to hear. So that's the advantage that we, the way it's built now gives us is that when a counselor makes a suggestion for an agenda item, we're all there when that happens. That's my only concern. I mean, otherwise it's just subjective. Somebody could make a, a suggestion for an agenda item and the city manager could say yes or no. Because that's the way the charter is, right? Am I right about that?
You are.
Yeah. So it just makes sense that it's still, that it, that it becomes part of the previous agenda to add it. And that gives the staff more than a day to prepare for it.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yeah, I think that, you know, making sure that everything is done in consultation with the city manager. And then obviously the city manager then has the opportunity to say like, we can't do that at this meeting. It's just, there's not enough time. We're too busy. We need time to prepare. But I know that in other cities, sometimes there's a requirement that, you know, not just one counselor can put something on the agenda, that it has to be like two or, you know, just so that you can demonstrate that there's a little bit of support, that it's not just random things that one councilperson thinks should be added to the agenda. I don't know if that's something that we would want to consider, but again, if it's in consultation with the city manager, it's probably fine.
Counselor Colley?
What does that look like in process? Is that like it's discussed at the previous meeting? Or is it two counselors, you know, CC and email together to the city manager? Or how does that work? Does it make sense to me like?
I think it depends on, you know, process.
Counselor Pesteza?
It sounds like we're slowly circling back to what the mayor just described. Our meetings are basically two weeks apart. So if we bring an agenda item, the meeting before, we're sort of giving you enough time and we can have some consensus of the group.
X or whatever reason my she, it's a burden matter and it can't be held, we keep the meeting.
And we don't need a rule for that. Because that's already built into the charter. Yeah, and it's your discretion.
It, it is. It is also reflected in B. And I'm wondering if putting B first wouldn't help clarify that.
Yeah.
That it really, and, and you could even just flip A and B so that A is, is not saying that you automatically get it on the agenda. It's just that if you're going to ask the, the city manager to put it on the agenda, you have to do it a certain number of days ahead of time. So you, you could just flip those and then change the timeframe to two weeks if you wanted or whatever.
Well, again, I don't think it's necessary because it's already in our order of business. Unless it's been removed. Like it's already in our order of business that we can build the next, we can help build the next agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think A is moot.
Right.
Unless, unless you guys want to have that ability, but, but you do have that ability because, because, because the charter allows the city to have, the city manager to have that discretion, no matter what. And we also have as part of our agenda, the ability to add something to the agenda at the beginning of the agenda where there's a consent available.
Right.
So, but if I'm, if I'm reading this wrong, was this a suggestion you had made because it worked for you in another city, Gary? I'm just, I just don't want to.
So you're suggesting that we just take out A entirely?
It just doesn't, because it's, it's, it's already a given that you can do that as long as it's okay with the city manager. Yeah. Counselor Colley, did you have your hand up? Okay.
Okay, then I think moving on to section three, C, and D, I think are probably not controversial, but you might want to take a quick look at those and see if you have any comments.
C is from the previous rules, is it not? Was that, didn't that come?
Yes, it is. Just slightly reworded. And D is added to the rules, but that's been our, basically been our practice.
Counselor Penomarif?
Yeah, I'm just worried the, the, the shall and the D, you know, I think every effort is made to get it to us three days before the meeting, but sometimes staff can't do that. And so the shall kind of scares me a little bit, feels a little harsh.
Shall endeavor would be, yeah.
I, it is our practice, but sometimes it's just really, you can't do it.
Can we, can we make that three business days? Well, let's see, that would be, yeah, three business days. It would need to be three business, Friday,
Friday.
Monday and Tuesday, yeah, by Friday.
Love to get it on the Friday.
I'll do that, make it three business days and shall endeavor or something comparable.
Yeah, so, so it doesn't feel like.
That makes sense.
All right, and we're getting close to the end of the meeting. I'm going to take, I'm going to take Counselor Perry Miller. We'll wrap up this one item and then take a break before our council meeting, if we can.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Thanks. I have a question just about this document. So like I'm, okay, so my question is, is it necessary to have C or D in this? And I'm wondering about like what these rules are for. These are how we govern our meetings. And I just, I, I mean, I see that these are from the old rules, but I'm just wondering if they're necessary to be in here. Because if we're suspending these rules, this is for a meeting.
Yeah, I am just wondering if it's. C has been necessary, especially, yeah, it, it's been, I've had experiences where if I don't have this meeting, I'm not connected with the kind of the order of business that the city manager has provided. And it just gets more challenging to preside over the meeting.
So I guess my question is, I totally understand why C and D are important things. I just, I'm wondering about the purpose of them being in this document. Is this just something that we can reference to remind ourselves how to conduct business and how much notice is given for things? I mean, is this a silly question? I feel like I'm asking a silly question. I don't think you are. Because I'm just thinking about like in a meeting, oh, let's just, we need to do something. We can suspend our rules. We can't suspend the charter. But we can, we can suspend the rules in a meeting. Maybe I'm getting in the weeds, but these just seem like a good practice. And maybe I'm a little spoiled because we get, this, this does happen for us. And if it didn't happen, it would be very stressful, but.
Well, that C was born of, of a time when we had a city manager that didn't come in to the office very, as much as they should have. And so this didn't ha- And so this didn't ha- happen as it should have. So I think that's where that rule came from.
So they're council rules that.
Part of them, it's part of the meeting procedure to have that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there is, I mean, I, the times when I, when we, when Gary and I miss it or Jordan and I missed it, it, it is harder to preside. There's a disconnect.
Well, and I, again, I fully see that these are important things. I was just mostly wondering if this is the right place for them in this document, which it sounds like it is.
Yeah, because I don't think there's any other document where it could live. The charter is voted in by the people, so we can't amend that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to, to suspend the rules, you have to have a two thirds majority. So you have to have pretty close to consensus to do that.
Yeah.
I guess my lawyer's mindset, having clear rules for your meetings, I think, is good for everybody, including the public.
And I understand that. It's just like these things wouldn't be something that we could control in a meeting. You know, this would be something that would happen far before the meeting. So, yeah, it was just a reference question. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate your patience.
All right.
Thank you.
Now we'll just keep going.
Thank you. And I, I, I realize this is tedious, but you're doing such a great job with these. It's really so good.
I think it'll get less tedious. So once we get through this, through page nine, then it starts to get, there's fewer changes.
Yeah, I have to tell you, as somebody who's been through this once before, this is going so, so well. And thank you for that, Dave. All right, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at six forty-two and we'll reconvene as council at six forty-five. Three minutes, y'all.